Thank you and welcome to all of our community members who are joining us this evening. Rena Bacalar, our Economic and Community Development Director is joining me. Thank you for waving. At this second virtual town hall meeting on jobs. In late July, we held our first jobs town hall meeting. This evening, we want to continue our community outreach by providing our residents with potential job and career opportunities. We know we have residents that are looking for employment and we are here to help. Trumbull is fortunate that we have several new businesses that have opened. Representatives from Amazon, Image First Healthcare Laundry, the Trumbull Mall and the Town of Trumbull will provide an overview of their business, available job opportunities and details on how to apply. I'd like now to introduce and thank our presenters for joining us this evening. Dan Anafrio, President and CEO of the Bridgeport Regional Business Council. You can give a little wave, Dan. Onelis Diaz, Staffing Coordinator from Amazon. Christina Hernandez, Human Resources for Image First Healthcare Laundry. Vanessa Mitten from the Westfield Trumbull Mall. And Thomas McCarthy, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations for the Town of Trumbull. I just want to give a shout out to those who helped us make this evening possible. And that would be our IT Director for the Town of Trumbull, Bill Chin. And Trumbull Television, Community Television is here always helping us as well. And we appreciate their help all the time. So before our guests share their comments and information, I'm going to give a quick town overview. I always begin our town hall meetings by thanking our first responders. The police, fire, emergency services, public works, healthcare workers, teachers and essential workers for their continued sacrifices. A thank you is hardly enough. I want to thank all of our businesses in Trumbull for following the state guidelines to ensure the safety of their employees and customers. I continue to urge all of our residents to support all of our businesses by shopping local. Our small businesses are vital to the success of our community. The town continues to provide our businesses with assistance in the form of resources, technical assistance, marketing and other supports during this difficult time. Town Hall will be closed on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd, except for the Town Clerk's Office, the Registrar's Office and Council Chambers for Election Day Registration. All other Town Hall employees will be working remotely on that day. All four polling locations in Trumbull will be open for in-person voting from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Election Day. Social distancing and sanitizing measures will be in place for your safety. If you are voting by absentee ballot, be sure to return your ballots as soon as possible to ensure they are received by 8:00 PM on Election Day. Ballots returned after that date and time will not be counted. The COVID-19 virus positivity rate in the state of Connecticut is now at 6.1%. Our rate in Trumbull is at 3.2%. We've had 42 new positive cases in the last two weeks. As we can all see, the number of positive cases is again increasing. Trumbull is in the yellow zone on the Connecticut tracking map. The scale goes from gray, yellow, orange and finally red. Each town is ranked by their number of positive cases. Gray is the lowest number while red is the highest. There are now 30 towns or cities in Connecticut that are in the red zone. I'd like to remind all of our residents to remain vigilant in dealing with this virus. Please continue to practice social distancing and to wear a mask when you are unable to social distance indoors or outdoors. Trumbull Social Services is seeking donations of grocery store gift cards for this Thanksgiving holiday. They can be dropped off at the Social Services office with a scheduled appointment or mailed to 23 Priscilla Place. Trumbull Social Services would like to thank you for your ongoing support of their department as they work to meet the needs of our families, friends and neighbors during these challenging times. I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Halloween. I will now turn the program over to our Economic and Community Development Director, Rena Bacalar.
Thank you, Vicki. I just want to echo Vicki's thanks, all the participants from our business community tonight. And repeat that this is our second Town Hall Meeting on Jobs. The town has a long-term recovery committee that meets. It is a largely staff committee with liaisons from various and the nonprofit community and the faith community, et cetera. And part of the work of that committee has been to assess what any of the unmet needs are or the long-term recovery needs are in our community. And the top three needs are really to get our businesses more financial assistance, to help our residents that are unemployed or underemployed as a result of the pandemic or otherwise, to connect with employment. And then food security issues, and Vicki just touched on that. In the coming weeks, you'll hear some efforts that we've been hard at work at regarding trying to bring more support to our businesses. You will hear more about work that we're doing to provide meals for people that are vulnerable and to use our local businesses. We'll be talking about that soon. But I think that we intend to continue to connect job opportunities throughout the year in forums like this to our residents. So this is our first evening session. We did the last session during the day and one of our residents said, you know, I think it would have been a nice idea to try it in the evening too, because people have various obligations. So this is our, you know, responsiveness to those kinds of comments. So again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I am always available to anyone, businesses or individual job seekers to talk with you about resources. We have a COVID Business Recovery Resource Page on the town website. It is updated weekly now. It was daily at one time. There is a section for employees or workers on that that has some resources and will continue to add resources to that. So I hope you'll visit that page if you need resources either for you, a business that you operate or for friends and family. So thank you. Without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Dan Anafrio as our first speaker to lend us some voice from our business community. He's a wonderful partner in everything we've been doing regarding this unprecedented pandemic and otherwise, he has been there to support us, to support businesses and to support our residents. So thank you for being with us, Dan.
Thank you, Rena. And thank you for select woman, Vicki Tesoro. It's always a pleasure to be part of these conversations. And as Rena mentioned, always happy to help wherever we can. First and foremost, I wish everyone, I hope everyone's well and safe this evening. As Vicki mentioned, the cases seem to be going up. So let's just be mindful and continue to do our part and wearing the mask, sanitizing and just be sensible as you're out and about your business. So I am the President and CEO of the Bridgeport Regional Business Council. We operate the Trumbull, Stratford and Bridgeport Chambers of Commerce. There's a lot that we do, but there's really three categories of activities that we try to focus our energy around. One is economic development and working with partners like Rena and our other Economic Development Directors throughout the region in trying to recruit and bring in business and find the right opportunities for those businesses looking to come into the region. Secondly, is around public policy and government relations. And obviously, a strong thriving economy needs good public policy to support the business community. So we focus our activities on those two things. And then relevant to tonight's conversation is our, what I call our third pillar. It's our leadership pillar. It's quickly evolving into a workforce development forum where we have several different programs which I'll get into in a moment. But obviously with the COVID crisis that's happening now, you know, we've been keeping a really close eye with our workforce boards and keeping an eye on that unemployment rate. And just to paint the picture for you, for you folks, the southwest region which Trumbull is included in from the Department of Labor, you know, we're averaging about 30,000 claims a month. And that's, or I'm sorry, a week. And that's pretty significant as a region. Here in Trumbull, we're over 1,000 claims of unemployment a week. And that's been trending down though since the summer. We were well over 2,000 claims a week in Trumbull. So that's good news. And of course, you know, the industries understandably so that have been hit the heaviest have been the retail and food sector, the healthcare and social services sector as well. And then of course, manufacturing. So on the upside of that, I just pulled the Department of Labor data this morning in preparation for today's call. The upside is that in those same sectors, there's quite a few job listings available. Specifically in Trumbull, there's nearly 400 job listings currently today. And that's thanks in large part to the partners we have on the phone today. Amazon, Image First and the wonderful shops at the Westfield Mall. So there are opportunities out there and I would just encourage those folks to leverage their resources, including us at the BRBC and the Chamber of Commerce for any of your needs. And you know, I can't guarantee that we can place you in a job, but we can certainly connect you with the right people. And on that note, one of the things we do within that leadership pillar that I mentioned is convening people. That's what we do. And we do that through several programs. So for the job seekers that are out there on this call this evening, I'd encourage you to get engaged. Yes, we are a business-to-business organization, but we have programs like our Women's Leadership Network, like our Thrive Young Emerging Professionals Group. We have leadership programs and professional development opportunities that we're constantly rolling out. So take advantage of those opportunities. They can certainly present a connection, right? A lot of opportunities become available through your network and through the relationships you build. And that's what we specialize in is building relationships. So I just encourage you to participate. Feel free to reach out to me with any questions. And then look for some career fears and some other developments around workforce development coming out of the Chamber and the BRBC going forward. So I'll pass it back over to Rena at this point. Rena, I am going to sign off because I have to jump to another meeting. But if you want to share my contact information, feel free. And folks can visit us, visit us at brbc.org for any other information. Have a great evening, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. It's always great to have you with us. That was excellent.
Thank you.
I would like to, by the way, if you want to reach Dan, 203-335-3800 is the phone number for the Bridgeport Regional Business Council. And he gave you their website as well. You can always contact me and I can put you in touch with whoever you need to be in touch with. So we are going to go next to Amazon. Onelis Diaz is going to be giving us a presentation on what jobs and the process for applying for a job at Amazon. So I'll turn it over to you now, Onelis. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you, Rena. Thank you, Rena. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. My name is Onelis Diaz. I am a Staffing Coordinator at Amazon. We conduct all the tier-one hiring for Amazon operations in southwestern Connecticut and downstate New York. Today, I'm going to cover at a very high level, what is to work at Amazon, the opportunities in Trumbull and our hiring process. At Amazon, we offer different type of opportunities and benefits based on which shift and location you select during the application. Amazon offers a minimum wage of $15 for all positions. All our roles have options for time off. You will also have opportunities for extra time, especially during our busiest season, for example, the holidays. Amazon offers many great benefits, but since this vary by rule, they will be covered in more detail during the new hire orientation. Amazon has pledged to upscale 100,000 Amazonians for in-demand jobs by 2025. Programs are available across corporate offices, tech hubs, fulfillment centers, retail stores and the transportation network. Eligibility for this program is varied based on your position. Many of the associates we hire take advantage of the Career Choice Program that pre-pays tuition for courses at accredited schools that lead to high-demand occupations such as information technology and healthcare. You can learn more about any of these programs at amazon, sorry, about amazon.com/upselling. Once again, about amazon.com/upselling. So what are Amazon jobs like? All our work environments have a relaxed rest code and it's a physical job. You must be able to lift up to 49 pounds with or without reasonable accommodation. You'll be required to stand or walk for the majority of your shift. You might even get the opportunity to work with power industrial trucks. If you're asked to any, to operate any of these industrial trucks, training will be provided to you. At Amazon, we have at Amazon, we have different type of buildings that come in many sizes. Some of them, you might be familiar with our large fulfillment center in North Haven. Fulfillment centers are by far our largest buildings that can stretch up to 15 football fields. We also have smaller buildings like the delivery station that we are, that we have here in Trumbull. As I mentioned, these are physical jobs and you will be moving and on your feet a lot. So it's important to wear comfortable shoes. Safety is Amazon's top priority. And in order to ensure a safety environment, there will be a number of safety regulations to adhere to. This include like keeping your nails trimmed and wearing closed-toe shoes. Ultimately, Amazon goal is to keep, is, Amazon goal is to ensure we're delivering up on the customer promise. Fulfilling the customer promise. These roles within Amazon are a critical piece on how we deliver the customer promise and get the Amazon package to their doorstep. The customer promise starts when the customer places the order. Then the merchandise and the groceries are picked and get packed. The box is labeled and loaded into a truck. Six boxes then are sorted by zip code and loaded into a delivery vehicle that bring them to our customer's doorstep. If you're working in a fulfillment center or as a whole food shopper, you will be supporting the beginning of the chain. Or areas, if you're working at a delivery station, for example, in Trumbull, you will be supporting the end of the supply chain. No matter where you are working, all pieces of this supply chain, sorry, are critically, critically important in ensuring our packages make it to our customers. Starting any job requires learning new skills and processes. And this is no different at Amazon. Since it's an active job, your body might be sore in the beginning as you adjust to using new muscles. Your performance will be measured, but over the first few weeks, you will be in a learning curve as you are trained on how to do your job. Speed is important, but ensuring that you're doing a quality work is equally important. Delivery stations. We currently have four delivery stations locally in Trumbull, Orange, Stratford and Danbury. At a delivery station, you will be sorting, scanning and loading customers' orders to fulfill same-day and two-day shipping. If any of you have seen the prime bands driving around your neighborhoods, those are from our delivery stations. Delivery stations are smaller and therefore they're less of variety of shift. With most of the shift being four to 10-hour days and they start early mornings. Hopefully, you're still excited about the opportunity to work at Amazon. If you're interested in Trumbull, the first step that you need to do is complete an application. And you can go to amazon-force.com, once again, amazon-force.com to complete your application. Once you complete your application, you will schedule yourself to one of our new hiring events. In order to ensure, to ensure safety with COVID, these events are now very fast. You will only be approximately 15 minutes with us to complete your I-9, initiate your background check, take your drug test and a bash photo. The great thing about Amazon is how fast our process is. So once you leave our new hiring event, you will have a convenient offer in your hand. This convenient offer will be up on passing drug test and background check. Once those two consciences clear, you will get scheduled for your first day of work. Prior to your first day of work, you will need to complete an boarding paperwork called my docs. And you will get also your new hire orientation that you will do it virtually. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but in Amazon, there's no resumes or interviews. To work at Amazon, you need to have a high school diploma or GED equivalent, have a basic level of English, be 18 years older and must be able to pass drug test and background check. If you feel like Amazon will be a good fit for you, the best way to stay aware of our openings, especially in Trumbull, is to text CT now 3 to 77088. Once again, to, if you're interested in the Trumbull position, you should text CT now 3 to 77088. And once you do this, our system will text you when, when there are new job openings. You can always visit our page online, amazon-force.com. Once again, you can also submit your application at amazon-force.com. New jobs go up on weekly basis. So please do not get discouraged if you don't see anything that works for you right away. That's why, that's why you should text CT now 3 to 77088. So once that position gets posted, you will get a text alert. Thank you. Thank you, Rena. And thank you all for having me today. And I hope to see you all at a new hiring event, a hiring event soon. Thank you.
Great. Is there going to be, do you think, an uptick in hiring due to the holiday season or any other reason? I'm just curious.
Our jobs are changed on weekly basis. The holidays are one of our busiest seasons. So if you're interested, like if someone is interested, interested in a position, they should text CT now 3 to 77088. And once that position gets posted, they will get a text alert.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go next to Christina Hernandez, who is running the HR operation for Image First Healthcare Laundry. It's a new company that is coming to Trumbull. And she's going to give you a little bit of an overview and talk to you about the jobs that they have available. You're on mute. You have to unmute.
So I'm sure that many of you are not familiar with Image First. So I kind of wanted to give you a bit of an overview of the company. So we actually are a national company. We have about 50 locations around the US. In Connecticut, we actually have a facility in Farmington, obviously, as well as Trumbull. Here, we started servicing the end of August, I would say. We currently have about 41 associates and will be growing pretty rapidly in the next few months. So our company was actually founded in 1967. We service about 8,000 medical offices around the nation. In Connecticut, we actually service Hartford Healthcare, which obviously is a very large medical organization. And that's just one of our medical facilities that we service. One of our big, we are really employee-centric. So we have what we call our operating principles. So our purpose, right, for me and my management team, we always talk about how we can create a positive environment for associates, our communities, our customers and obviously the patients, right? So that's our purpose every day for coming to work. Our values, be respectful, be remarkably safe and be honest. Our goals, again, always starting with the associate. Customer with that, you're going to get growth and benefits. And our service vision, which is creating a positive moment with every interaction. So we have these operating principles around our facility in English, Spanish and French. And everything we do, we base it upon our operating principles. We have what we call our three pillars. So always care, connect and impress our associates, our customers and their patients. And then when we talk about the benefits that we offer. So we offer medical dental 401K flexible spending account. We, we actually pay for your life insurance. So the life insurance is based upon your salary. So whatever you make, you actually get life insurance coverage paid for. Same thing with long-term disability. We have the holidays pay time off. So you have about six different holidays that we pay for, pay time off. And then we have many different associate programs as well. And we also really like to again, recognize our associates because for us, the most important part of our business is our associates. So we have something called leading the way where we recognize our associates on a regular basis during our huddles. We also make it a point to understand the needs of our associates. So our particular positions that we're looking for currently, they're our production associates, right? So most companies call their employees employees. We call our employees associates. We feel that getting good associates in the door makes all the difference. So we have a system for applying where we would like you to come in. Okay, so it's a little old-fashioned, right? Most companies have an online system. For us, we want you to come in. We want you to apply in person. We want to talk to you right then and there. We may hire you on the spot. We do have interviews. We have it where I meet with you, the department supervisor meets with you. The general manager speaks with you. We want to get to know who you are as a person. So we pay, our minimum is 14, so we pay 14 and 15. So right now, we need about 15 associates, but we are growing. So that number is going to increase, right? So right now, we need 15. By the end of the year, we need about 25 more associates. So to get into contact with me, I actually like people to call me personally. So my number is 860-558-0373. So if you have any questions about the production associate position, you could actually just call me and we could speak one-on-one. We also have driving positions. They start at about 55,000 and you also get a quarterly bonus. And dependent upon your route would determine your bonus. And it's usually pretty decent-sized bonuses. So as I said, the starting rate is 55,000. Depending upon the route that we give you or we discuss, it could go up to about 70,000 and that's not including the bonuses. Any questions?
Sorry, Rena. I just wanted Christina to repeat her phone number one more time. Thank you.
So Image First Healthcare Laundry is located in the Trumbull Corporate Park, which is off of Exit 11, off of Rowdy. They're at, I want, let me, I'm doing this from memory, 50 Commerce Drive. And they have just redeveloped the entire building. It was, it was a 60,000 square foot vacant building. They redeveloped, you know, reinvested in it, made it what they need. And it was quite an undertaking actually, so it's great. And they have brought new life to that particular building. And we're really are pleased that you're here. Just like we're very pleased that Amazon took 7120 Main Street in Trumbull, near the Monroe Line, that building had been vacant. It's 114,000 square foot building that Amazon purchased. It had been vacant for probably a decade. So these are great stories of not just corporations coming and reinvesting in our properties, but providing jobs to our residents. And we just appreciate how community-oriented all of you are. And it's been wonderful getting to know our two new corporations. So now we're going to shift gears and go over to the Westfield Trumbull Mall. Vanessa Mitten is with us. She is, I think, the head of marketing. So I don't know your exact title, Vanessa. You have to excuse me. But we do work together on a fairly regular basis. But we do work together on a fairly regular basis. She's wonderful to work with, and she's going to talk to us a little bit about how you learn about job openings at the mall.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yes, Rena, you are correct. I am the head of marketing for the Westfield Trumbull Mall in Trumbull. My title is marketing director. But we are gearing up for the holiday season. And, you know, while it's been a challenging year for all of us, I am very happy to be able to report that the Trumbull Mall is recovering from our COVID closure pretty well and and at a very rapid pace. So we're really excited to see our shoppers coming back. And, you know, while we have limited hours currently, we are getting ready for the holidays. So we will extend our hours a little bit further. And the customers are coming back and they're spending and they're enjoying being back in the center. So it's all very encouraging. We are doing a lot of things to keep our shoppers safe as well. We have hand sanitizing stations throughout the center. We do require that masks be worn in the center at all times by employees as well as shoppers. We're, we've put in place all the proper social distancing, more like that. So with that, you know, the holiday season is our busiest season of the year for for a mall. And this year, we anticipate there being a lot of additional needs for our retailers because through the COVID pandemic, we've identified a lot of different roles that now need to be fulfilled. And, you know, some of those things include employees to monitor store capacity, to make sure that we're keeping our capacity levels correct. Employees to run curbside pickup orders out to to shoppers' vehicles, the shoppers that don't necessarily feel comfortable shopping in an enclosed shopping center. So we have those. We have a need for line greeters to make sure everybody's social distancing properly. There's just so many new positions that have come about as a result of everything that's gone on the past several months. So we're currently working with all of our retailers to compile a database of everything that is available right now. And I will show you the website. However, we have taken down the jobs page currently because we are editing that to reflect all of the holiday hiring processes that are taking place or all the new job opportunities that are are available with our retailers. But I will attempt to share my screen. But we, if you visit www.westfield.com/trumble, that would bring you directly to our mall website. And I had pulled it up, but now I'm not seeing it. Hang on one second, I'm sorry. So when you go to www.westfieldtrumbull, westfield.com/trumble, you will arrive at this page. And in order to see available employment opportunities with our retailers, you would click on the top here where it says services. And then you would be able to scroll down to the bottom of the page where we have a link to employment. And keep in mind, these these employment opportunities that will be listed will be for our retailers. Westfield is not currently hiring for this location right now. So these would be employment opportunities at retail locations and restaurants. And then you would just click on this link here. And like I said, we've actually taken that page down because we are in the process of editing that page and making sure it's it has the most up-to-date information on it. But most of the stores will also have signs in their windows stating that they have employment opportunities available and to inquire within. And then also, most of our retailers have their own websites where they also have their own employment opportunities listed there as well. But interested parties would need to inquire within with to those individual retailers in order to interview and apply and more like that. So we're excited for the holiday season. And, you know, if anybody has any questions regarding employment opportunities or if they need the link to this again or anything like that, I'd be more than happy to share my phone number and email address. I can be reached at vanessa, V A N E S S A dot mitten, M I T T O N, at, and then just the letters, U R W dot com. And I can also be reached at area code six three one seven four seven five nine three seven. Again, that's six three one seven four seven five nine three seven.
Great. Vanessa, do you have any sense as to when the new page will be up?
So it's funny, we we just learned about this opportunity to be with you tonight a couple of days ago. And we were in the process of compiling that whole page. And I tried my hardest to get it ready for you guys tonight. But our digital team needed a little bit more time to work on it. So I would say Monday or Tuesday, the latest, we should have that link available.
Great. No, no worries. We just want to, if people have a sense as to when to check back. The other thing I wanted to mention is Vicky and I were in and Vanessa hooked us up with some businesses in the Trumbull Mall. We've been doing a business tours and videos you'll be seeing about our businesses upcoming. And we visited Ardene, which is a new store in the mall that opened pretty much right before, was it right before or right during COVID?
During COVID, so they weren't open to the public until May, even though they're they're they were ready to go.
Right, right. They're in the they're in the former Charlotte Russe space, and it's a really nice store. My daughter loves this store. But anyhow, Rose, who Vicky and I were meeting with and interviewing, she told us they have a management position available for people that have some retail background. So you can feel free to reach out to Ardene if you're interested in that kind of a position. And I was really impressed by the company. It's a Canadian company that's trying to establish a footprint in the United States. So there are benefits to shopping there that you can't get online because they're trying to do all these promotions to get people in the door. And their their stuff is really cute. So I just thought I'd throw that out there and give them a plug.
Yeah, for sure. And off the top of my head, I've seen a few others come through over the past couple of days. I know the Children's Place has multiple opportunities that they're looking to fulfill. I know Studio Brow is looking for some cosmetologists who can do eyelashes and eyebrows. H and M has some need for fulfillment as well as bath and bodywear. So there there is going to be a pretty robust list of employment opportunities once that page is up and running.
Great. So we thank you so much. And thanks to everybody that's tuning in for supporting our mall. I want to now introduce Tom McCarthy, the Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations for the town of Trumbull. He's just a top-notch guy, and he's going to talk to us a little bit about municipal hiring and what's coming. So thanks for being here, Tom.
Thank you. Bill, you know, put my, you know, thank you. And by the way, I think, Vicky, I think I'm leaving to take the eyebrow job at the Trumbull Mall. Just want to. Hello, everybody. I am Tom McCarthy. I am the Director of Human Resources for the town of Trumbull. We have a three-person staff, as you can see on there. Mary Ann Meyer is the Personnel Manager, and she does a lot of the main hiring. So when you, if you go through the hiring process in Trumbull, you probably will deal with her actually more than you do with me. And Lisa Brett is the Administrative Assistant, who also is a good touch point for all of the hiring questions. There is one, there, I have three links on the page for you, and you can take those down. But let me give you a little hint. If you go to the first one, number one, that has the other two links in that on that page. That is the the Human Resources Civil Service main page there, which is that www.trumbull-ct.gov, two ten, Human Resources Civil Service. That is the place, the best place to go to if you're looking to have work in the town of Trumbull. If you go to that website, that will explain to you the general basis of how we do hiring in the town. But also will give you the two links to the two, the two main locations where the jobs are held in in the town. It's important to know that we are separate, although everyone thinks of the town as one big group. In reality, we're separate between the Board of Education and the town. So the town is what I work for. So I work, I do all the hiring for the town of Trumbull. That would be things like, you know, public works and Parks Department and tax collector, stuff like that. That's that would be the stuff that we do, the town government side. The other side of the coin is the Trumbull Board of Education. Many times, the Trumbull Board of Education has more jobs than we have on our side. So it would behoove you, if you are looking for a job, to check out fairly regularly those two sites because we are constantly rotating need, depending on the time of the year, depending on what we're doing. Their jobs pop up and go back and forth. So you really, and they usually have very strict time limits of when you can apply. So it is a good idea, if you are job hunting, to regularly check out those two sites. If you're looking for a job on the town side, we have, we have a vendor relationship with governmentjobs.com, meaning that you must apply through governmentjobs.com. The the link is governmentjobs.com slash career slash trouble ct. But if you just go on Government Jobs and do a search for the town of Trumbull, Connecticut, it will pop up with all of our jobs currently. And you must apply through there. And what happens is, once you apply through there, it will come to the town and then after, then we will essentially take over the process. You'll hear from from my office after you apply through that. But you cannot just send us a resume through the town. So you can't, you can certainly call us to talk about jobs, ask about when they're going to be posted qualifications. But if you do, if you just drop a resume off at our office or mail it to us, it doesn't work. You have to go through the governmentjobs.com. So the Board of Ed, I really, I don't have anything to do with the hiring of the Board of Ed, but I do know that they have a lot of jobs open on a fairly regular basis. Particularly with the COVID world, they've been doing a number of extra hires for cleaning services, things like that, extra, extra staffing to cover classrooms. That stuff is is happening fairly regularly, and it's it's an ever-moving topic. So if you are looking for a job, it really is important you go check out that that web, that site for the Trumbull Board of Board of Education. Bill, can I have the next page? Okay, so Trumbull, Trumbull Jobs, Trumbull Jobs, let's see. So we have a civil service system based on hiring for our town. Civil service is a very formalized process of hiring. What that means is is that we do, we have to, we do a screening in our office for experience qualifications and before we, you are allowed to go to the next level. And then, once you, you pass the experience and the qualifications, you go through a testing process. Now, testing, I wouldn't, I don't want to scare anybody off with the idea of what testing is. Testing sometimes can be sitting down and taking a test and filling in bubbles. But many times, it is putting you on a computer to see what your typing skills are or doing things that match what the what the qualifications and the needs are for the job. So one of the best things to do is if you identify a job that you think you'd like for the town of Trumbull, what the best thing for you to do is is to go on the website, take a look at the job description and see what's there and see if you realistically would have some of the qualifications and experience for that job. Because you're gonna, you're going to very quickly be given a test that that meets that standard. And sometimes, by the way, it's just an interview type testing. But I just went through an EMS hiring process. We hired a lot of EMS techs in paramedics. And it was a very, very rigorous process. And if you didn't have the proper certifications, and if you didn't know the, if you didn't know the right answers to how to, you know, how to take care of somebody when they, when they're passed out and you come to the house, then you are getting very far in that world. So I would ask, ask before you apply for a job, you really take a look at the qualifications and try to see if you match up with that. The point of the civil service process is to create an independent and fair hiring process for jobs. And that is because, you know, if you read the paper any day, you hear about, you know, people getting jobs, brothers, cousins, friends, and friends and relatives. That is, the civil service process is made to keep that out so that everybody, you don't have to know somebody, you don't have to be related to anybody, you can just be a regular person. If you have the right qualifications and the right background, you can get a job in the town of Trumbull, and we encourage you to apply. It's important to note that COVID does have impacts. So we have had and continue to have a hiring freeze in the town of Trumbull. I don't want that to scare you off as well because a hiring freeze doesn't mean that we're not hiring. What it means is is that we have a higher level of approval process before we're allowed to hire. So that means that our first selectman, Vicky D'Orro, and myself will say yes before we are allowed to hire. And so we were very strict on this hiring freeze during the epicenter of the pandemic. We are slowly but surely reopening that, right? The, if you look right now on our website, you will see that it's mostly just full of seasonal and part-time positions. If that's what you want, you should apply for those because we're always hiring going into the into the winter season. We're hiring folks to to shovel snow, to plow, things like that. That is, that is a very active job title. So if you want to do that, feel free to apply for any of those jobs. But pretty soon, if you look on that list, we are in the process about to put a number of these jobs on our website for hiring. And so police officer is always a very popular thing, the job, a great job in Trumbull. Very rigorous process, but you should consider it if you're interested. And then a lot of higher-end jobs like rec program manager, fleet mechanic, operations director, assistant tax assessor. Those are, those are high-level jobs with great benefits and great salaries. So we have a unionized system here. And so if you can get into the union system, we have great, great benefits, medical benefits, some of the best anywhere in the state of Connecticut. But also, we have great options for you for retirement and great insurance options. So really can, really consider to take a look at those positions, what we have, that are changing on a fairly regular basis. So I would check back on those jobs, all those jobs in the next week or two and in the next couple of weeks. And then you'll see that a lot of those go up there and and feel free to apply. So the whole purpose of this is to make sure you understand where where to go and to hire in the in the town of Trumbull. But I go back to the very beginning. Our phone number is two oh three four five two five zero four zero. Feel free, call us anytime if you have a question about a job. You'd like to know when a job's going up, you want to ask us about qualifications of their job. We are there to help and try to make the process as smooth as possible so that we get the best candidates for our job. So again, two oh three four five two five zero four zero. My name is Tom McCarthy and available if you have any questions.
Thanks, Tom. That was great, really and truly. And all of you did such a great job explaining your company or organization, the kinds of jobs, the process. And I think that's just terrific so that folks can digest that and be more prepared as they apply for jobs. So at this point, I'm going to turn the program back to Vicky Tesoro to see, one, if there are any questions from, you know, from participants, but two, for her closing remarks. So, Vicky.
Thanks, Rena. And I will just echo Rena's comments there. Thank you very much to our presenters. You did a fabulous job. I think we've, you know, given our our community members an opportunity to see some really fantastic possibilities if they're out looking and seeking employment. There's a great array of different possibilities that that you provided here this evening. And that's, that's really, I think, the what we really wanted to do here tonight. So I don't, at this point, see any questions on on the chat. I'll wait a minute or two here to see if anyone has a question they want to ask. Bill, I don't know, is there anybody that you see anywhere that's looking to ask a question?
Sure. If there's anybody out there who would like to ask a question at the bottom of your screen, you can press the raise hand button, and that'll indicate that you're looking to ask a question. We'll open up your microphone. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine.
So while we're waiting on that, we might want to just ask each company to repeat their contact information. The basic contact information for anyone that might have missed it. I'll give you Dan Anafrios again. He's at the Bridgeport Regional Business Council at Ten Middle Street in Bridgeport. The phone number is two oh three 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 five three eight hundred. I don't, I did not write down Dan's email, sorry. But if you need any other contact information from Dan, for Dan, you can contact me during the day, and I will get that to you. O'Nellis, do you want to tell us your contact information once more for Amazon?
Yes. The, to receive text alerts for the Trumbull position, you have to text CT now three to seven seven zero eight eight. Once again, to receive notifications for Trumbull, CT now three to seven seven zero eight eight. You can also go online to amazon dot forest dot com. Once again, to amazon dot forest dot com. Search Connecticut, search Trumbull, and you will see all the opportunities that are in Trumbull. If if anyone has any questions, they can also visit amazon delivers dot jobs slash contact us. Once again, amazon delivers dot jobs slash contact us. And a person from our customer service team will answer any of the questions they may have.
Great. Christina. Can you repeat your contact?
My direct-
Uh my direct line is eight six zero five five eight zero three seven three. Again, the number is eight six zero five five eight zero three seven three. Um my email, which I didn't mention, is c hernandez@imagefirst.com.
Great. Vanessa.
Um I can be reached at area code six three one seven four seven five nine three seven. Six three one seven four seven five nine three seven. And my email address is vanessa.mitten@urw.com. That's V A N E S S A dot Mitten, M I T T O N, at the letters U R W dot com.
Great.
Did you want me to do the, Rena, I'm sorry, you broke up.
You can just say your number again, just.
Yeah, two, Tom McCarthy, two oh three four five two five zero four zero. That's the HR part.
And if anybody's looking to reach me directly, you can reach me at two oh three four five two five zero four three or my email at rbakalar@trumbel hyphen ct.gov. You, Tom and I, you can find on the town of Trumbull's website, www.trumbel hyphen ct.gov. So this has just been great. Thanks to everybody again. Vicky, I don't know if you have any other comments or if there are any questions.
Bill, so do you see anyone that's looking to ask a question? Okay. So I again want to thank our presenters for taking the time this evening to get this fabulous program. And uh certainly want to thank all of our community members who are either watching this uh Zoom meeting directly or on Facebook. Uh we will, um this is being recorded, so this will be available to be rewatched or watched on TCTV. And uh it's shareable on, on, on Facebook as well. And we will put it out there so that people can see it and, and watch it at a later date. So again, thank you very much. Um I just uh always like to end up my comments by saying to be safe and be well. Uh and I wish everybody a happy holiday season as we go forward into the months of November and December. And thank you so much again for taking the time this evening to be with us.